All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board. I call this meeting to order at 6:00. If you could all rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
If we can all stand in a moment of silence for our student Luna Brenner that lost her life last week. Thank you. So before we start, I do have a board member, Dan Cludier, who is on the phone. If you can just say here and alone.
I am here in my office and alone.
Thank you, Dan.
Excited to be here.
Yes, excited. And then I also have Janelle O'Brien on the phone. Can you just say if you're here and alone?
I am here and I'm alone.
Thank you, Janelle. So welcome, everybody. Tonight is a little bit different of a school board meeting. We are having presentations from some of our administrators for budget. We also invited the Budget Committee to come and listen. And we have a microphone at the end here. If any Budget Committee members have questions, you can come up, state your name, and you feel free to ask any questions. We also had a new Goffstown High School's teachers' rep, Amanda Nix. Thank you so much for coming here. We are so excited. And I think that is it. We can start with our presentations.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to recognize and thank all the members of the Budget Committee for being here this evening. Mr. Platt, I don't know if you wanted to maybe just do quick introductions of the Budget Committee members that were able to be with us?
Okay, I'll do that. I'm Fred Platt, the Vice Chair of the Budget Committee. Joe Alexander is not present tonight, but he previously let that be known, so he's excused. We have Stacy Bellamore. We have Lauren Dukas here. Greg Flegels over here. Bill Cordes is somewhere. There you are, Bill. We have myself. Evelyn Redman is somewhere, right there. Sorry, Evelyn. Jared Talbot. And that's it, unless I miss somebody.
Melanie.
Melanie, sorry, Melanie.
Melanie Redman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Fred. And so what we're going to do this evening is, this is, we listed this as a joint meeting between the school board and the Budget Committee, but primarily this will be budget presentations. So if there are questions or concerns, anything that Budget Committee's members would like to ask, you're certainly free and welcome to participate along with the school board this evening. So with that, Mr. Gross, if we can start up the presentation, and we're going to get right to it, the board does have other business that they need to conduct this evening in non-public. So we'll conclude this session, I would say, probably by 8:45 at the absolute latest, but maybe closer to 8:40 or 8:35, depending on if we have kind of a natural stopping point. So anything else housekeeping-wise, Mr. Gross, before we get started?
Just a couple of things. I wanted to first thank the Budget Committee members who are here. I did provide the school board members with copies of the budget because after this next week, they will deliberate. When they're done deliberating, then I'll be giving you a clean copy of whatever budget that they have brought forward to the Budget Committee. That's why you don't have, you know, more stuff in your package.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
So let's go.
So as most of you know, we're here tonight. We're going to also meet again on Wednesday night at 6:00 p.m. And basically, you're going to hear presentations from myself and the superintendent. We're going to be talking about the overall budget, and we're also going to be talking about the district budget. You're also going to be hearing from Principal Hogan. Right? I got it right? All right, congratulations. And then Lisa Johnson is going to be here representing Maple Avenue. Lisa is the Assistant Principal, and she'll be doing the presentation for Maple Avenue. And then on Wednesday, you'll hear from our other schools. Okay?
And so just to be clear, we told the other administrators not to come this evening. So if they weren't presenting, with the exception of Mrs. McGrath and Mr. Borget, who are here, if there are questions regarding the district budget, the other principals were told not to come tonight. So they'll all be here on Wednesday, and certainly Jerry and Lisa are here to answer any questions about Bartlett or Maple Ave., but the other schools will just wait till Wednesday.
Okay.
All right, Scott.
All right. So as with when you're formulating a budget, you want to really what are some of your goals? And we want to execute on our continuity of our instruction in our grades pre-K through 12th grade. One of the most important things that we do in the district, Kate knows that, she's our HR director back there, is we want to attract and retain the best possible staff and teachers. And one of the overarching themes of this budget is that we have a teacher's contract, which is going to be a separate warrant article. So we're trying to keep this budget as lean and conservative as possible, knowing that we have a teacher's contract that will be on the ballot. We need to deploy technology that advances student learning, but also that makes us more efficient in our operations. So you'll see that throughout the budget. It's educational technology, but it's also technology that makes us more efficient in what we do. Providing clean and safe schools, we try to be very proactive in our maintenance and very appreciative of the school board and the Budget Committee, because they recognize that in order to maintain our abilities, we have to be proactive in doing so. And lastly, we want to make sure that we're very proactive in our communications with folks like you and all members of the community. And the superintendent does a great job communicating via video. Our principals do the same thing on social media. Very, very important.
Scott, before we go on, if I can just emphasize for the Budget Committee members, as Mr. Gross shared, there is a teacher contract that will be a separate warrant article this year. That means there are no teacher raises in this budget. So it's important for everyone to realize that if we have an approved teacher contract, those raises get built into subsequent budgets. That's not the case this year. So when you hear the overall numbers, just remember that that does not include any wage increases for anyone in our professional staff bargaining unit.
Thank you, Brian. So COVID-19, there's no doubt that COVID-19 has been throwing all of us a curveball in our personal and professional lives, and no different here. As we try to shape our budget for next year, it is extremely challenging, you know, for us. The, we've seen just, and you'll see that when you look at the actuals in our budget, you're going to see our transportation is under budget, because we had to run less buses. We're going to go over a little bit of that. In staffing, sometimes we can't hire someone, even though we want to hire. In other cases, we are trying to then do more in terms of remediation for students who might have had learning deficits. So it's kind of challenging trying to budget, you know, for COVID. We are going to focus in on remediation, enrichment, and unfinished learning. Those, that's our big theme for not only this year, but next year and the years ahead. This is not something that's going to, we're going to snap our fingers, and in six months, we're going to fix things. This is going to take some time. We're going to also focus on mathematics. If you look at the data, both locally, state, and nationally, our reading scores pretty much were fairly stable, but mathematics is what took a pretty good hit in terms of student progress on assessments. So you'll see, you'll see some highlight there. The other, on the next slide, I wanted to, we got a lot of grants from the federal government. So you'll see that, and we're going to talk about this, some of the monies that we got from, that we received from the federal government, we're going to be using for remediation, some staff, also for infrastructure. As I mentioned, the Budget Committee knows this, because I had the spiel, but the school board didn't hear it. ESSER, the grants were twofold. They were to help school districts with COVID-19, but there was also a part that stimulus. So some of our construction projects are really more stimulus-oriented, while hiring teaching staff or maybe more technology might be more student geared. All right? So that's kind of, a lot of people are like, why are you spending money on potentially windows? Well, because part of this is stimulus-oriented. It's not solely student remediation needs. Similar to last year, when we did this budget process, we are not budgeting for PPE or extra cleaning supplies. We've been pretty fortunate, the state, Brian, right, has given us a lot of, you know, a lot of PPE, and if need be, we'll use grant money for that. But so far, so good in that respect. COVID-19 has kind of forced us to be, you know, creative, you know, in our approaches on things, whether it's the use of technology. Obviously, no one envisioned that, you know, over one weekend, we would move all of our students to remote learning. But it does present, you know, some challenges. So that means that, like, we're looking at right now, student support, there might be remote student support. We have to deal with quarantine issues right now, because we can't have our, we can't have remote learning as a component of our educational experience due to state law. So now we have to be creative. If kids go out on a quarantine for 10 or 20 days, we have to provide services to them. So that is, that is quite challenging. And then really, the big thing for Budget Committee and for the school board is that our prior year's actuals are not always the best indicator of what our FY23 budget would look like. So I remember last year, Jared was, you know, he was giving me this formula, and I did, I used the formula, right? So I did a weighted average. You know, Jared teaches statistics, so I'm going with the weighted average. I'm looking at the weighted average, and I'm like, this does me no good, because unfortunately, you tend to wait, because I've used your formula, the prior year more heavily than the third year out, but it was a COVID year. So it, you'll see when we, when we look at actuals, it's, it's not super easy in that respect. So I just wanted to share that with you. In terms of our calendar, we're going to be here tonight and on Wednesday night. We're going to start at 6:00 on both nights. I anticipate that we're probably going to be about two hours, hopefully maybe a little bit less. The Budget Committee, I'm sorry, the school board will review these budgets on the 18th and the 20th, again at 6:00 p.m. And then if need be, we have another one scheduled on the 25th, if it's necessary. And then it'll go to Budget Committee, Fred, on October 26th. You'll have all of those copies that I promised you, and I'll provide them to you paper and electronically as well. And as I mentioned before, tonight will be, we're going to be talking about the overview of the budget, our revenues, that's very, very important, our district budget lines, which comprise a big chunk of the total overall budget, as well as the Bartlett Elementary School and Maple Ave. And then on Wednesday, it'll be food service, Glen Lake, Mountain View, and high school. So your next slide, one of the important things for those of you who are maybe new to the budget process is, we have to budget what's called on a gross appropriation basis. And we have multiple funds. There are three primary funds that you'll see as we go through the budget. The largest component fund is your general fund, and that's where I'd say 90, 95% of all of the financials go through the general fund. And as you can see, that's about a little over $45,590,000 and change. You also have a food service budget, and that is a fund that is self-sustaining, or at least should be self-sustaining, meaning that the revenues that you get from the federal government, from local food sales, so when kids buy lunch, that is supposed to offset all of your expenses. COVID has thrown a monkey wrench into that, and for the last two years, the school board has had to subsidize through their general fund food service to keep it afloat. The third component is what's called your special revenue or your grants budget. Last year, that was a $1 million budget. This year, it's a $2 million. The reason being is that we are getting ESSER grants. These are grants from the federal government, and Fred's going to ask me, elementary, whatever, and it's federal grants, all right? And essentially, your grants expenses must equal your grants revenue, so we're not raising any money from taxes there either. So you'll see what's called at the bottom, it's your gross appropriation. It's all of those three funds added together, recognizing that the food service and the special revenue fund are offset dollar-for-dollar by revenues. All right? So you're really only having to raise by taxation your general fund dollars. All right? Any questions on that? So when you go on the warrant article, you'll see that.
Hang on a sec, Scott. Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, I just wanted Scott to clarify that. So Scott, as we're looking at this, what we're going to see on the warrant article from what you're showing on page four is $48,835,360. It would not be the $45 million.
Correct.
So just, just seeing the numbers on what the voters are going to see is going to be that bottom number.
We call this the Dan Cludier slide. Right, Dan?
It certainly is, and I'm glad I don't have to ask the question.
I thought of you as I did it.
Thank you, Jared.
All right. So here is an overview of your budget for this year. Now, you'll see that up top is the budget that we're in right now, and I did not include the $200,000 capital reserve fund, which was approved by voters last year, the last couple of years, as a matter of fact, because I'm trying to compare general fund to general fund. When we talk about FY2023 base, base is essentially another name for your default budget, and I'm going to cover what a default budget is in a few slides. Your new spending is a little over $304,000. So I'm also going to cover what is a part of new spending. So, and I'm going to talk about that in a few slides, what's default and what is new. So in total, we're, our administration budget is $45,590,337. I take a look at the difference between the default budget proposed for this year and what our budget is right now, and it's a little, almost $208,000 less. And that's a little weird, right? Like, why would a budget be less? But I'm going to explain later on that we had a couple of large expenditures, like the bond at the high school, was satisfied this year, so that is no longer in the default budget. That's why we're seeing some of that, but I'm going to cover that a little bit later on. And then when you take a look at what we're requesting in FY23 compared to our current year, it's a little over $96,000 more. As the superintendent stated, the largest reason for this is you do not have your teachers' pay, your teachers' contract, and those salary changes are not in this proposed budget. What is in this budget are your support staff contracts. All right? Next slide. So default budget calculation, there is an RSA that controls how the default budget is calculated, and that's 40,013, and that's Roman numeral nine. And one-time expenditures are removed from the default budget. And I'll give you an example here. Last year, or the current year's budget, we had $12,000 to do building appraisals as part of the area agreement. Well, that's a one-time, we're only doing that once, so that gets pulled out. Increases in propane and electricity are not part of the default budget, rather, they're new spending. Now, this is subject to interpretation. The law is a little vague here, but my interpretation, that of the superintendent, is that we take a look at our energy spending in the current year, and if the energy spending goes up, those are new budget dollars. There are other communities that look at three-year averages, five-year averages, and they take a different interpretation. Ours is that it would be new. I'm going to show you a little bit later on that we have increased propane costs, which I think are in the neighborhood of around $65,000. There's some more. I think our utility costs are very close to $90,000 to $100,000 of that new spending, which is 304. So about a third of it is just in energy. All right?
Yeah, and I would just add to that, Scott. That interpretation really is important, because the interpretation that Mr. Gross and I take is a very conservative one. Dan, you'll remember many, many years of spirited conversation about this, but again, we've taken a much more conservative approach. Some districts, if the price of propane goes up, they just include that in their default. We don't. So some of those pieces, I think it's just important for the board to understand, about a third of the new spending is energy-related.
Couple more things that I wanted to mention is that administrative salary and non-union salary and benefits are also considered new spending, because they are not approved by the voters as part of a collective bargaining agreement. So the law is very specific there. If you're part of a collective bargaining agreement in which the voters have approved that contract, then it is part of the default. But if there is no such collective bargaining agreement, if it doesn't go before the voters, then it's part of new spending. And lastly, special education costs, such as out-of-district placements, transportation increases, that is part of the default, because it's mandated by law that we provide these services, either through an IEP or through court orders, et cetera, and therefore it is part of your, part of your default. Any questions on any of that? Okay. So the question that I asked before was, why is it lower? And I was looking at Evelyn when I said it. So the bond was about $567,000, and the principal interest, that is no longer there. We also had modular classrooms at both Mountain, I'm sorry, at both Maple and Bartlett, and that lease was also, we satisfied the last payment this year, so that's about another $126,000. And as the superintendent mentioned, teacher salaries are level-funded and pending ratification and approval by boards, the collective bargaining unit themselves, as well as the voters, hopefully in net, I'm sorry, in March. So there are some budget lines in the default that did go up. Even though the net is a decrease, there are some lines that did go up, and that is the voter-approved salary and benefit obligations for our support staff, like I said before. Out-of-district placements, the state allows a 5% increase for our out-of-district facilities, so they are allowed to increase their rates by that amount, and that is in a part of your default. Transportation, I mentioned before, as well as some vendor contracted services. So I think I've mentioned this last year and the year before when I did these presentations, we are trying our best to have district employees who are speech pathologists, for an example, but we've been unsuccessful, so we have to contract that service out. Same thing might be true for behavioral specialists. And if we can't hire those people as an employee, then we have to provide that service. We hire an outside company, they tend to be a little bit, say, a little bit more, they're about 25% more expensive. So if that is the case, that would also be part of the default. And then you have your SAU management costs and those assessments, and I'll cover that as well. A lot of this is a little bit of an overview, the last, the first two bullets, but health insurance. When Kate and I look at health insurance, Kate looks at a 10-year average, shall we say, and that's about 6.2% over the last decade. And dental, we're budgeting an increase of, she's very precise, 1.15%. And we expect to get our guarantee, GMR is guaranteed maximum rate, that's what that stands for, and we get that from our health insurance provider, Health Trust. And Evelyn, you know, you worked for the town at one point, so you're very well aware of that. It's, it can be a very volatile rate. So the town of Goffstown had a 17% increase about a year or two ago. I'm told that they might have no increase, or maybe even a decrease, this for January rates, and then we'll find out what happens for us. We're in the July pool. So hopefully, it'll be at or lower than 6%. And that's, this is always a tricky one for us, because we spend around $5 million on health insurance for the entire district. So if you do the math, you can see that that could be like a $300,000 swing. And then some bit of good news is that last year, we got slapped pretty hard with that retirement system increase, and luckily, there are no increases there. So that was a very, very big hit to our budget last year. As I mentioned before, our energy costs, they do drive a lot of things. So at Bartlett, I'm sorry, for electricity, they've been somewhat stable, thanks to Fred. Appreciate that. Fred used to work in the energy sector.
I'm still on the Science, Technology, and Energy Committee for the legislature.
Good. Keep those rates low. And I'm a little nervous about natural gas at Bartlett, because it's pretty volatile right now, so I think we're probably going to be deficit, we're going to have some issues this year with natural gas, but I've level-funded it for FY23. Our propane costs, we went out to bid this summer, and unfortunately, we saw a 36% increase. We're going from $1.16 per gallon to $1.58, and these are all going to be in the new spending category. And the last one was electricity costs at Glen Lake, and those are also going to be new. I'll take the hit on this one. I thought, I was looking at Maple Avenue as a predictor for a portable, but everything is run off electricity at Glen Lake. So that's the heat, the air conditioning, the whole thing, so we were shy on electricity. So I did, I did do a budget increase over at Glen Lake, so I take the heat on that one. Our transportation costs, we are under, we have a, we're in the, we're in the second year of a three-year contract with our special ed transportation provider, which has a year of a three-year contract with our special ed transportation provider, which has a three percent escalator in it. We're in the second year of a five-year contract for, with Goffstown Truck Center, they too have a three percent escalator. And you'll see that I budgeted for twenty-two regular education buses, which is the contractual minimum. Right now, we are not running twenty-two buses, but if we're running about seventeen or eighteen on a good day, superintendent has to sometimes send out messages every morning, which buses are late, they are scrambling. But as, hopefully, they get more drivers, then we'll be able to have more bus runs. But this is one of the most challenging years we've had for student transportation. The next one is, is going to be a very significant shift in where dollars are. So we've reclassified our school IT budget line. So in the past, we had IT personnel, give you a great example, we had our database manager, who was under the high school budget, but she does this database management for the entire district. She really belonged in the district line. And most of our IT people are, even though they might be housed in a particular building, sometimes they're itinerant, they go in-between buildings. So we put, we put vast majority of our IT people in the district line. And you're going to see that we've taken a couple hundred thousand out of one school and put it in the district line. And so you'll see the district line went up over, I think, close to four-hundred-thousand dollars for IT, but you'll see that it decreased in other buildings. We have repurposed positions within our budget to support two IT folks, as well as an elementary school instructional coach. So I think we've been often asked by school board and budget committee, how to, you know, try to repurpose positions as best you can. So if there is not a need, or if that need has kind of waned, then you would, you would try to repurpose that. So we have done that here. We've recognized, and our Steve Borzet, he's sitting over there, he's our IT director, our IT tech per user ratio is abysmal. I think it's almost like, what, eight-hundred to one, or maybe nine-hundred to one, higher thousand? Okay.
It's around nine-hundred to one.
Yeah, that's like horrific. So we're trying to, with all the devices that we have and all the infrastructure that we have in our schools, this was so paramount for us to do this. So we've repurposed two positions, and we've done that. And then, last but not least, you'll be hearing from Jerry, who's the principal at Bartlett, that we have one new position in our budget this year, and that would be an interventionist, and she'll explain the rationale for that this evening. Within your, your packet, and, you know, Richard Manzo used to make fun of himself like colorblind, but I think it was like salmon is the color, is revenues, right? Was it salmon?
Yeah.
Okay. I screwed up last, with orange and yellow, and I've never lived it down, so I want to try to get it right. So on your revenue side, you'll see that compared to last year, our revenues are, I'm increasing them by three-hundred-thousand dollars. This is the tuition that we charge to the new, to New Boston. So I am anticipating, you know, more revenue. I'm trying to like, this is one that is, it's tricky, because last year, New Boston had, you know, there was a lot of students who went homeschooled or they went different places. So, you know, you try to predict these things, and sometimes they come true, sometimes they don't. But I feel pretty good that that's a good number. Our bond is satisfied, so that's a good thing, right? Because we, we no longer have five-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand in principal and interest. Well, on the flip side, we're no longer getting two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand in building aid. So the net, school board remembers this, when I, I think I mentioned this, that, you know, it's great that we lost that, but really, the net was like three, four-hundred-thousand-ish. We're, I'm expecting a little bit less adequacy in FY twenty-three than what we're getting in FY twenty-two, and no thanks to you, Fred. No, kidding. Fred's a state rep. But that one, like a couple hundred thousand, nothing that's kind of earth-shattering, but this is the trickiest one. And, you know, the school board speaks with our reps at least once a year, and we do talk about this one. Building, whether it be our adequacy aid or whether it be building aid, these are very, very important revenues, because the more money that is funded through the state, it's the less money that you, as local taxpayers, have to, have to contribute. So I am very cognizant of that. Investment income right now is kind of low. We've had some good years and bad years, but right now, we're not getting much interest on our, the balances that are in our accounts. So just recognize that. And then, our grants revenues are up substantially, and you'll see that, that's when I, why I upped our budget by a million dollars. But that's going to be offset by, you know, those expenses and the revenues will offset each other. Oftentimes, you and the, on the budget committee will ask, hey, what's the school board doing with their capital improvements plan? Right now, that capital improvements plan has not yet been fully approved by the planning board. I suspect that's going to happen this week, right? Yeah. And when that happens, we'll provide both the school board and the budget committee with a copy of that capital improvements plan. We are very, very grateful to the budget committee for your support three years ago in terms of creating the capital reserve fund. We have been, we have put in six-hundred-thousand dollars into that over the last three years, and that has helped us fund a lot of important projects. The second one, you'll see, the Mountain View Systern repairs, we did that over the summer. That's going to be about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project, and we use cap, we're going to be using capital reserve funds for that. I try to give you some examples, roof repairs, boiler replacements, drainage generators, pavement is a biggie. So this is going to be a very, very important piece for the school district, because it allows us to be proactive in our, in our replacement of important assets that we have. And Brian, you always say that our school buildings are the most important asset that we have in our community. That's so true. The only way, we need to keep those assets in good shape, and appreciate the budget committee's support there. I felt it was important to talk to you a little bit about use of grants, because this is a very, very important piece that the school board is going to be deliberating on over the next two to three years. We're getting a lot more in federal grants, but it's only going to be for a couple of years. And after that, all those funds kind of go away. And our strategy at the SAU and with administrators has been to be very strategic in how we do that. You don't want to put a lot of money that would be operational with your grants, because then when that grant goes away, you either have to eliminate that operational position that you brought on, or you're going to have to fund it through a budget. So we're trying to do a very delicate balancing act between bringing on some needed staff and, but also using some of these grants for capital projects. So the district, we budget for IDEA, these are, those are special ed, as well as title grants, and you'll see that was part of your gross appropriation that I mentioned before. These are off, these expenses are offset by an equal amount of revenues, and again, there's no tax impact there. We are getting about three-point-six million dollars in these two grants. One of the grants is a little over one-point-one million, that's the ESER two, that expires September two-thousand-and-twenty-three. And then the other one, which is like two-point-five-ish, that expires September two-thousand-and-twenty-four. This, in, in terms of our budgeting, we've used grant funds to support an elementary school, special education teacher at Bartlett, and tutoring support. We're looking at capital projects, such as the replacement of older windows at Maple, Bartlett, Mountain View, and the high school. So that is a project that was already on our CIP, so we are first looking at our CIP for these capital projects. And the district will continue to look at how we can spend these ESER grant funds. And there is a form that is on the website, so if any of you or any members of the public have any ideas that you would like to see these grant funds spent on, then please fill out that form, let us know, and give us your feedback. The board will be making these decisions over the next, next year or two. So now, we're going to kind of give you a kind of an overview of where we are in terms of enrollments and COVID. This is a tricky one, too, because, you know, during the last couple of years, we've seen, well, I shouldn't say, the last five years, we saw enrollments either stay fairly steady, which was, was bucking the trend in the state. The last year, I think that some families decided to either send their kids to other schools, homeschool, et cetera. So as you can see, we're projecting, our, I'm sorry, our enrollment, last year this time was twenty-seven-eighty, right now, it's around twenty-seven-forty, so it's fairly stable. But if you take a look at what it was in two thousand and eighteen, it was almost at twenty-nine-hundred. So we always look at this to see, this is how we also kind of gauge class sizes, and this does, this does drive our budget to a certain degree. Any questions on enrollment?
Go ahead, Jared.
I see just Glen Lake's not there, and I know that we are operating Glen Lake. So are we expecting that enrollment number of two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty to increase?
Yeah, that, that number is at around two-hundred. You're going to see that on Kathy's slide, because I was, it was late in getting to me, but I think she's projecting two-twenty, I believe, but it'll be in her, in her slide.
Good, thank you.
Okay. And then, another important factor is class sizes. So we have two elementary schools, Bartlett and Maple, and at first watch, they're like, wow, you know, the class sizes are a lot higher at Maple. Well, they're also a lot bigger. If you, if you went to the hundredth year celebration of Bartlett, like I did, and you go into the original schoolroom, I mean, you're looking at like six-hundred square feet, where, you know, technically, the ed specs for a classroom are over nine-hundred. So it's a third smaller at Bartlett. So you have to have these type of class sizes, or else they'll be kind of like scrunched in like sardines. If you take a look at, at the middle school, we're in fairly good shape there with our, with our class sizes. And then, I did not include high school, because the high school is very much dependent upon the class that you're taking. Some classes might have over twenty students. You might have another class that might have fifteen. It just, it really depends upon the nature of the subject that's being taught. Our special education numbers as of this year, so Jennifer Dolof is our special ed director, and we've seen a slight uptick here. We're about nineteen percent of our student population has been identified as having a need for some sort of special services. And that's about one to two percent higher than what we typically see. We're typically in that seventeen, eighteen percent range. But this year, we're, we're going to be around nineteen percent overall, and you can see how that shakes out across some of our different schools. Next, our English language learners. And just for perspective, the state has over fifty-four-hundred students who are English language learners. In our district, we have fifty students who speak seventeen different languages. Now, you're saying, wow, that's quite a bit. If you look at communities like Manchester, Nashville, and some others, it is much, much greater than that. Free and reduced lunch. This is a measurement, I don't think it's the best measurement, by the way, of trying to determine what communities might be needing. And there's a couple of reasons for it, in my opinion. One, during COVID, with, with a free breakfast and lunch program, many parents didn't sign up because it was going to be a free program regardless of whether you put the application in or not. That's one of the reasons why the legislature fixed it this year, thank you. And they, they used the counts from a couple of years ago, or whatever was higher, because every community saw very big reductions in free and reduced lunch numbers. But you'll see that this is how it is, you know, based upon school. And, you know, overall, I think this is another one that I kind of have to keep an eye on, because it, it also is a component of the differentiated aid that we get from the state. So if you have a high percentage of students who are on free and reduced lunch, you get a little bit more in terms of your adequacy. So we do pay a particular attention to this one. Now, I'm going to go into your cost per pupil. This is for those of you who've been on the budget committee or school board before, it's, this is going to be, oh, I've seen this one before. Yeah, you probably have, because the story is one that's been fairly consistent, in the sense that Goffstown has had a lower per pupil expense as compared to the state in, in elementary, middle, and high school. So you'll see, I'm going to focus in on the one that's in bold, which is, I think, the second bullet. Goffstown's elementary school cost per pupil in FY twenty, which is the last bit of dataset that we have, was a little, almost fourteen-hundred, fourteen-thousand-four-hundred, and we're the tenth lowest out of a hundred-and-fifty-five districts with elementary schools, at over twenty-seven-hundred dollars less per pupil. So you can look at that, you know, two ways, you know? I think, you know, for me, it demonstrates that, you know, we're trying to be fiscally responsible with, with our dollars. Some argue the other thing, hey, I think you need to spend more. That's fair. But I think it demonstrates that, you know, we're trying to be as conservative as we can with tax dollars and try to give the best possible educational outcome for, for our students. So the next slide, which is your middle school, it's going to be very similar in terms of these. So there are sixty-one middle schools, and Mountain View is the fourth lowest cost per pupil. I do anticipate that, when I look at this data next year, I think that it will not be as, I think it might tweak up a little bit, because I think our costs went up a bit. But as you can see, almost twenty-eight-hundred dollars, a little over twenty-eight-hundred dollars, less than the state average. And I put this little caveat on all those slides, is that the cost per pupil takes into consideration the number of students that you have in a building. So when you're, you can only imagine that if you have less students, but yet your costs are the same, you're going to have a higher cost per pupil. But I think you should recognize that most communities saw the same type of thing, so it's not just, you know, special to Goffstown. Most communities saw population enrollment decreases due to COVID-nineteen.
Scott, we can also add to that, the cost per pupil is a state report that we receive, and it removes two elements that are important for the budget committee to know. It removes the cost for transportation, because a city like Manchester may have a lot of kids who are walkers, and say, a small rural community may have more need for busing. It also removes the cost of any bonds. So, for example, Bedford High School, Bedford Middle School, those costs for that complex were removed from the per pupil cost for the community of Bedford. So it removes transportation and all bonds. So just keep that in mind.
And last is the high school. And Goffstown has the eighth lowest per pupil cost out of seventy-three high schools, a little over twenty-four-hundred dollars less than the state average there as well. You'll note, though, that last year, you'll see that the budget, you know, that cost increased. It was more of a function of enrollment than anything else. I just wanted to highlight that. Next is, I just wanted to share with you some of our testing data to show where we are relative to, you know, to that. We did not test in two thousand and twenty, so you are correct. If you said, hey, what happened in two thousand and twenty, I think we all know. What happened in two thousand and twenty, right? It's kind of like a lost year in a way. But you'll, for those of you who don't know, ELA stands for English Language Arts, right? Yeah, right? No, there's a lot of acronyms in education. I'm the, I'm the financial guy, and I'm supposed to know all this stuff.
You're getting there.
I'm getting there. They've been tutoring me. So as you can see, we've had some decreases there, and then in math. So this, we know, I'm kind of teeing this up for you, Jerry. Jerry, Jerry, I'm teeing this one up for you. In twenty minutes, you're going to, you're going to say, refer to that slide.
What is SAS?
What is SAS? Student Assessment?
State Assessment System.
State Assessment, okay, there you go.
It's the state testing.
State testing. Okay, so now we go to Maple Avenue, and you're going to see here that, you know, kind of the story is still, is, is very similar, that we know that COVID had impacts on our student learning at Maple Avenue as well. And I'm going to go to the next one, which is Mountain View. So you'll see, this one, in terms of English Language Arts, it was kind of stable to a degree, but then you see the math was, was about thirteen point, percentage points less, and science was, was also down. So the next is, next couple of slides have to do with your SAT benchmarks. The first one is, is for reading and writing. And for the most part, it's, it's a little bit impacted, but not, not tremendously. And I think, if you look at your, at your sheets, it was seventy-two percent and sixty-six percent in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, and roughly the same in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. So I don't know if COVID had a tremendous impact on that. And then, we go to mathematics. This is where you're seeing a little bit of slippage from forty-nine percent to forty-eight. Again, not a ton, but we know that our assessment data, again, local, state, and national is all showing that math has been an area of concern. all showing that math has been an area of concern. And, you know, last but not least, you know, and Brian, I don't know if you want to take this last one, right? But this is something that I know you speak a lot about in terms of value in our system.
Yeah, and this really has been a pretty consistent message for us over the last 10-plus years, is that the cost per pupil is well below the state average, and our outcomes are at or above the state average. So we feel very strongly that Goffstown continues to have a high return on investment, and we continue to be very fiscally conservative with our use of tax dollars.
So for the overview piece of it, and as we get into another district, you're going to start to see some more numbers, because I know a lot of you on the Budget Committee like the numbers. But any questions kind of on the overall look at the district?
Anyone?
All right.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
The district piece, as I mentioned before, there's a lot of components to this. And for those of you who are new to the Budget Committee, this is all of our transportation. For those of you, we have special ed transportation, regular education. We also have to provide homeless transportation by law. All of our information technology, we have maintenance and athletics management are all part of the district. Our substitute teachers and staff, this one you'll see is an important piece. We're going to talk about that in a second. Our teacher and staff professional development is also in the district line. Our special education services, so we spend, oh, boy, $1.2, $1.3 million on out-of-district placements that comes out of the district line. English Language Learner Services, our summer program. So we have, we have a summer program, for those of you who don't know it. And it's not just for kids with special education needs, it's for kids who just need, they have some deficits, and we try to address those during the summer months. Those are also a part of your district budget. Your school board, elections, audit, SAU, and legal services, they're all part of the district. Your administrative salary pool, this is a pool of monies that are for administrative salaries and/or salary adjustments. And at some point, we're going to be talking about that. Kate, you're here, so if there are any questions. But we typically benchmark our administrator salaries on an annual basis to make sure that they are competitive within southern New Hampshire and our neighboring communities. So and when we do that, we find that more often than not, we are lower than our surrounding communities, which then has to, we try to address that with our salary pool. So you'll see some of that when we look at the budget. In some cases, we've had years where it was over $10,000 of, you know, we had to change, you know, adjust someone's salary because it was that much lower. So the pool, that pool is there for that purpose as well as percentage increases. Retirement stipends, our contracts provide for a stipend at the end of service. And Kate, help me on the number of years typically? Okay. And then it tiers up. So starting if they retire after 15 years of service, and then obviously, those dollar amounts gradually increase over time, but those are a part. And I can tell you that there was an increase this year because we've received more retirement notices than we would like. So you're going to see that. And that's part of your default because it's contractual. Our services, our testing within our schools. And then last but not least, town of Goffstown services. So you're going to see in this budget a little bit of a shift. So in the last couple of years, the school district has paid for the services of a school resource officer at Mountain View Middle School. The town approached me about three or four months ago that they want to pick up the cost of that service of the SRO, however they would like for us to provide revenue to them for GTV as well as some parks and rec services. So it's just going to be the same dollar amount, but no longer in Mountain View, now in the district. All right? So a little bit there.
Hang on one second, Scott. Go ahead, Jared.
One note of clarification, I'd just like to touch on for the public, Scott. District budget, now, we in Goffstown are putting money towards the district budget, but we also have students from New Boston. So how does New Boston pay for the district salaries or the district costs? Is it just through the tuition, or do they also have to look at district costs within their budgets?
That's a great question. Thank you for sharing that. The district cost gets split up. So New Boston pays because I can take the district cost, and then based upon different formulas, district expenses get, how should I say that? Routed, I'm not supposed to get the word, but they get segregated into elementary, middle, and high based upon student population. So let's say for an example that we have a $10 million district budget, and 40% of our students attend Goffstown High School, then 40% of the district budget, for the most part, goes to the high school, and then New Boston pays based upon that. Okay? So it gets added to, you know, the high school.
But that's built into the tuition they pay? They don't pay specifically for the district cost? They pay tuition. It covers all of that.
Right, but in the formula, a percentage of the district budget they pay for. Okay, is that fair enough? So you'll see, and this was the one, you know, you see that last number, $702,000 is the difference between this year and last year. I'm going to kind of go over like what that looks like. The new spending is a little over almost $127,000, but I'm going to explain why, what that 702 is comprised of. So here are some of your highlights. Teacher substitutes, we are proposing a budget of $270,000, of which would be an increase of 20. Last year, there was an adjustment made by the Budget Committee to reduce it by 20,000. So now it's at 250, and we are, the administration's proposing that we reinstate it to 270. There could be an argument that it could be more, but we're, we think that we're trying to see where we land in terms of we have increased our rates, but we want one more year of kind of experience. When I look at the three-year average, even the weighted average, it's right around that 270, 280 area. So I think that one we're still trying to figure out, but we feel pretty good with an increase of 20. As I mentioned to you before, the SRO was a Mountain View cost of 84,000, now it's a district cost. So it just went from Mountain View to the district. And that's going to support Goffstown Television. And for those of you who don't know, Goffstown Television does all of the meetings, et cetera, but they also do a lot of activity for the school district in terms of athletics and music and other programming. So we thought that that was a fair way to go. Parks and Rec also does a ton of work for the school district. They mow a lot of our lawns, and they line, they line our athletic fields. And that's a lot of work when you're lining lacrosse and field hockey and football fields every couple of times a week. So we felt that that was only appropriate to, you know, to have that relationship and to have that cost.
Scott, before you move on, you've got on that slide, it says on the top right, it says 1,100 function. I just wanted to emphasize that in your packets, in your yellow folders, there's a blue paper that Mr. Gross provided you that has all of our common uses of our accounts, and it includes the functions. So if you look on the second page, it gives you function codes. 1,100 is regular ed, 1,200 is special ed. If you haven't been through the budget process with us, you'll kind of catch on as you go. But this sheet is really helpful. So when we're going through, if we say 1,100 fund, you know, account 223, you can start to go into the sheet and figure out, okay, they're talking about a salary line, they're talking about a health insurance line. This is helpful if you haven't been through this process before, just because there's a lot of terminology that we'll use.
All right. Your next one, your retirement stipend, so again, 173,000, and, you know, I'm not sure, you know, how many retirement notices we receive, but we received more than we did last year, unfortunately, or fortunately, people want to retire, it's good. But $47,000 more there. The elementary school instructional coach for teachers, where we repurposed a teaching position here at Goffstown High School for that, for that position. This is important, you know, we have a lot of newer educators, and having someone who can serve as a mentor, role model, and demonstrate effective instruction is very important. So we felt that that was a good repurposing of a current position. Now, your 1,200 functions, the superintendent said this would be special education. Our out-of-district placements, we're budgeting almost $1.3 million, of which the difference between last year and this year is about $61,000. This is that 5% increase that these providers charge, that the increase they charge us. And then last, on this slide, these are the contracted services for occupational therapy, speech. All of them have increased their rates across the board, and you're seeing that indicated there. 2,000 through 2,700 functions, that's pretty much like everything else. And that's student support services, it could be speech, it could be health services, you name it. And as you get, 2,600 are your facilities. So this is like everything else district-wide. So as I mentioned before, we moved all of our information technology, six total, from schools to the district lines. Again, no difference, just shifting from one school to the different line, from different schools to the district line. SAU services, I put this one, pens SAU board approval. They will do this in October. The SAU has the ability to use fund balance, which they have, and/or indirect costs from grants. So that that number might go down a bit, but I don't know that, so I just kind of budgeted like worst-case scenario there. Your special education transportation is up 25,000. IT software, this is another one that we're now using Power School e-registration. So for those of you who have any children in the system, in the past, we would send out packets, and we're moving more towards electronically doing this. It saves a lot of effort on the back end, you have to keep, before we had to get the paper and then key it all back in. It wasn't a beautiful like transition. I think we're still working with some pickups. But as we get better at Power School e-registration, it's going to be more of a time saver. And it's also going to be nicer, if you're a parent, I know when I did it, I got so frustrated, you know, having to do the same thing, like filling out six forms, you know? Whereas, you know, this should be hopefully an easier process. Property and liability insurance, we lowered that by 15,000. We've had better experience in terms of fewer claims, and that has generated less, a few, a little bit less in terms of premiums. So I reduced that by 15,000, just recognizing that something, stuff happens. And in a year or two, I could be saying, I need to increase it by 15, but I felt that we had ample room to lower it. And I think those are pretty much your highlights for the district. When we go through kind of page by page, you'll see that I just try to highlight some of the bigger items. You're going to see a lot of decreases of $1,000, $2,000, $3,000, increases here and there. I didn't touch upon every single one of them. The schools have in some cases, they, if it was $1,000 or $2,000 on a supply line, they're going to note that because for them and their budgets, that's kind of noteworthy. For what I do with the district budget, I'm trying to look at things that are like $10,000 or $15,000 more so. But when we go through more or less page by page, you'll see that you're going to see reductions, and they'll be in parentheses, of, you know, $2,000 here, $3,000 there. But you'll also see some increases. What we tried to do was take a look at our actuals, take a look at what are, what's going on in our buildings, and then make adjustments. So there's a lot of lines that are level funded, but you'll see a lot of lines that are reduced, and some lines that are just increased because costs have gone up. So with that, any questions on the district?
Anybody? Go ahead, Fred.
The retirement stipend, was that for staff or was that teachers? That was district level, so that's staff?
It's both, right? It's both.
It's teachers and support staff.
Teachers and support staff.
And those stipends are part of our collective bargaining agreements. We put them at the district level, Fred, because it incorporates all schools. So instead of putting them at Maple Ave or at Bartlett, we put them all in the district line. And then when Mr. Gross pays the bills, and when we do the financial reporting for the state, we have to identify what goes to what level.
Follow-up question is, if you have an increase in retirement stipends, people retire, you're getting substitute, new teachers at a lower salary, starting at the bottom of the?
Not always.
Okay.
But generally, yes. I think that it's safe to say that if you look at over the years, we tend to see that it'll come in a little bit lower. But, you know, it depends upon the job. I mean, we have hired people with, you know, master's step eight or something. It does happen. It just depends upon, we also are able to bring in those with work experience at a different, you know, they don't come in right off at the lowest level either. So generally speaking, you are right. We call that teacher turnover, you know, and that, that is there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But Scott, please let the public know that we don't try to get the cheapest teacher. We try to get the best teacher for our students, not the cheapest, because we want a teacher that's going to help our children learn, not to save money in that process.
All right, thank you, Jenny.
Necessarily.
Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, on the topic of our substitute line, substitution line, I know the Budget Committee reduced it last year, 20,000. I also, we keep hearing quite often that we can't fill those subs positions. What would it, the actual have been if we had filled every one of them? Would it still justify a reduction in that line?
So what you're going to see when you look at the actuals is that our actuals were over 300,000 last year. You'll also see that the year prior, when we had no school from March through, was 180-something thousand dollars, and that's what the Budget Committee looked at. I think in fairness and in totality, that's something that you will look at as a school board, and you'll say, hey, do we feel comfortable, you know, adding 20,000? I felt that I would want one more look. And if we end up at 300,000 again, as Fred mentioned before, in terms of teacher turnover, et cetera, I'll have to look there. But I wanted one more year of seeing where this thing is going before I made that. I didn't feel comfortable saying, oh, add $50,000 to it. I wanted to take a baby step first.
Except are we accounting for the number that we weren't able to fill when we're looking? Because that reduces the actual cost each year, because if there were, I don't know how many times, we couldn't hire that sub.
And it's challenging because of COVID. So that's another one where I'm like, do, you know, Brian and I talked about this, and Kate, and like, okay, let's go one more year. Let's restore it to 270. Let's give it one more year to see what this thing looks like, of the experience. I could be wrong, but I'd rather take the baby step than say, oh, I need 325 or 350. So I wanted to try to be conservative in this particular budget cycle.
Okay. Go ahead, Amanda.
In the numbers from last year, I know that many of our teachers by contract ended up getting paid for taking on substitute periods. Is that included in subpay, or was that elsewhere in the budget?
So if they, so picking up extra class or picking up extra duties, that was coming out of the salary.
Just for substitute.
It would come out of, you know, like Goffstown High School salary line, regular education, if they were a regular ed teacher. So it was coming out of that line, not substitutes.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question before we move on to Bartlett? All right, well, thank you, Scott.
You want the clicker, or you want? So it's just that thing.
Before we welcome Mrs. Goggins, I would be remiss if I didn't share with the board and share with the public that Jerry and her team planned a spectacular birthday party for Bartlett. It really was. And Jerry, we're so grateful and so appreciative to you, to your committee. Board members who maybe haven't had the chance to meet, this is Christine Colburn. She's our new assistant principal. She's split between Glen Lake and Bartlett. So she's here tonight in the, for the Bartlett presentation, and we'll, we may see her again on Wednesday, but I wanted to welcome Christine. And again, Jerry, I know you had community member input, you had teachers and support staff that helped, but that was just a spectacular event, and we're very grateful.
Yes, thank you.
We're very happy. Thank you to everyone that was able to attend or see some of the historical data. It was a great celebration, and it did remind us how much the community matters. a great celebration, and it did remind us how much the community matters. So, thank you, Brian. All right, so Bartlett Elementary School, we are, I'll start.
Speak up, please.
Oh, sorry.
That microphone works for the TV, doesn't work for the room, so you have to speak up.
All right, I'm on my teacher voice, okay. So Bartlett Elementary School, I'm looking at the slide for the overall budget, the, we're going up about $37,314 is our increase in what we're asking for this year coming up. And like Scott said, it's mainly, we have one position that we've asked for, interventionist position, and I will explain that further. Historical enrollment, it's been pretty consistent, around 200 seems to be our number, we're expecting 195 next year. It does fluctuate even by the week, so I'd say we're pretty stagnant, pretty level. Classroom teachers, we continue to have the perfect-sized school, we have three classes of each grade levels, 1, 2, 3, and 4, we fit perfectly in our old school. And we have classrooms within the portable two, two third-grade classes outside, a library outside, and then the classes inside. We have one library media specialist, who's amazing, one reading specialist, two Title I teachers. We typically get a grant-funded Title I teacher, starting in October or November, we were able to do that last year, and again this year as well. ELL, we have 13 out of the, I believe, 50 students in the district, 13 are ours, so we have the ELL teacher. Art and PE are both two days a week, and we share staff for that. It's very effective, it works out great. We did add a couple of years ago, and thank you for supporting that, an extra half a day for our music teacher, so that we can have strings and things like that, to equal out with Maple. Paraeducators, that will go down a lot next year, we have 14.5 in the budget this year, next year it'll be 8.5, and that's because of students moving up to the middle school and needs changing. So you'll see that reflected in other school budgets going up. Secretaries, we have one year-round secretary, one school-year secretary, who is part-time special ed and part regular ed. Thank you again for supporting this, grant-funded special ed teacher, so we have four special educators right now, we've had three for many years, the fourth is greatly appreciated and needed, so I hope that grant funding continues. Speech pathologist, we continue to look for a speech pathologist, but we do have contracted service, so that, as Scott said, that is a little bit more expensive. OT, we were able to find a great OT, we have .7. School psychologist, we share with a couple other schools, so we have a .3 out of our budget. Guidance counselor continues to work well, four days at Bartlett, one day at Glen Lake, so that continues to work for us. We have one nurse, who all the nurses should get a kudos, last year and this year. Last year was very difficult for COVID, this year is very difficult in a different way, because there's a lot more kids coming in and out, and we're not quarantining, which is great, but the nurses deserve a kudos. One full-time custodian and two part-time custodians, they deserve kudos as well. The administration for one, we have Christine .4, so thank you for that. And we have one full-time kitchen staff and one part-time kitchen staff. So that's the overview of our staffing, not much is changing. This is the big change, so we have done a lot of research over the years, district-level and Bartlett-level, and what sparked this was a few years ago, we had talked with the admin team, and Brian had requested that we do a data, you know, data dive. So Athena Chisholm, who's the reading specialist at Maple, had done some extensive research on the data, compared to what Bartlett has, what Maple has, and what our needs are. So I'll dive into that a little bit. And this was pre-COVID. So pre-COVID data shows that our students require additional small group instruction in English, Language Arts, and Math, to be ready for the grade-level instruction. If they're not ready to be where we're instructing, then they continue to fall behind, or they don't make the growth that they should. So if we can get them up to where they need to be at the beginning of each year, then they can meet their grade-level expectations. So the pre-COVID data showed that the Bartlett students did need more targeted instruction and support. So for that, you do need staffing that is well-trained and can provide that support. The data is consistent, we looked at when they come from Glen Lake into Bartlett and into the middle school, and it is consistent, this particular group of students, this particular dynamic, needs some extra support. Then we looked at this year, just to see if this is still valid post-COVID or during COVID, I guess you would say. The beginning of the data year point for this year showed that 61% of our Bartlett students, not including special education, enter first grade with letter naming fluency risk factor indicator, meaning that if they can't, by mid-kindergarten to the end of kindergarten, they should be able to name their letters correctly and quickly. And that's how they learn to read, because they need the phonemic awareness, they need to understand what the letter is, the sound, and start to put that together. 61% of our students are not there yet. There is some lag because of COVID certainly, but it continues to show that we need them, we need more support to get them up to where they need to access education.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Just, how many of our Bartlett first graders come from Glen Lake?
We have...
What percent?
Oh, my goodness.
We have about the equivalent of three classrooms or 60 kids every year that enroll in first grade and did not attend Glen Lake. So for Jerry, that's probably 20, maybe a little bit less, and Maple, it's 40 to 45 on average.
I'm wondering about how that impacts the 61% of the kids who don't have that letter naming fluency.
Right.
That's why I'm asking for a percent.
Definitely from Glen Lake, we can tell the students that have gone to Glen Lake, and they have better letter naming fluency coming from there. There are more students in Glen Lake that are coming to us with special needs, but that's why they're going to Glen Lake, so the numbers do support that.
And the other children have no preschool kindergarten?
They do, they come from many, many different places.
Different places.
Some are part-time, some are full-time, and they haven't learned our curriculum and our way of doing school, so it does take some time to catch up.
I'm wondering about the correlation between that and the 61% not meeting that fluency part.
Right, I can look it up, I can get that information.
I'm just curious about that, and the public needs to know what's, yeah, we offer the preschool, the kindergarten program, but if 60% of them aren't using it, or are going elsewhere, not getting our curriculum, that's a significant piece that I think the public needs to understand.
And for families, I think the board is acutely aware and understands the challenge for many families, and this was the challenge for my kids, back many years ago, when they were in kindergarten, a lot of families can't support the two-and-a-half-hour kindergarten program, and they want full-time. So I know back, back when my kids were in kindergarten, we paid for full-day kindergarten because we didn't have the support system to get kids back and forth, to provide a half a day of childcare. It's a challenge for a lot of families. So, and that's something that I often hear from Glen Lake parents, or people who are just entering Glen Lake, and they're, they're very interested in full-day kindergarten. So I would say, again, I have said this for many years, full-day kindergarten in Goffstown is a long ways away. Even if we wanted to have full-day kindergarten, we do not have the space, we don't have the resources, and there would be a significant budget increase to have a full-day program. So this is something that I do want the board to know is critically important, and we are not getting closer on full-day kindergarten. So right now, full-day kindergarten is not in this budget, and we aren't planning to present that to the board anywhere in the near future. The minimum standards for New Hampshire could be changed at some point in time, that would require full-day kindergarten, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there, and it's a space issue for us.
And that is why I'm asking for that.
Yep.
Many times I'll ask a question, and it has impact in other areas of discussion, but, and the other piece of it is, how long does it take these kids to catch up? And the whole impact on the program and the need for services...
The data is showing it takes about two to two-and-a-half years for them to fully catch up.
Okay, and I think that's critical information for us right here in our own community. It's not something outside, it's how we are impacting our own children and our own budgets.
Right.
So I think it's really important.
So what we've seen is, we do have Title I, which is very helpful for the early intervention.
But still.
And they're, they're helping, oh my goodness, 30 students, 60, 60 students in the first and second grade, so, and we could use some additional support in third and fourth, but we've mostly targeted first and second with that. So that's where we need, we need to catch these students young, and that's why the interventionist position would be so important.
And that's why, this is a position that we have discussed in the past, and I supported it this year. So that interventionist position, I do think is needed, is warranted at Bartlett. Bartlett has our students with our most significant academic and social emotional needs. So I do want to make sure the board understands, the neediest students are at Bartlett, and that's why we've put additional resources over the years, including the special education teacher that Mrs. Gogan mentioned, that is a position we are funding using ESAR funds. So you're going to hear about a number of positions that we are strategically planning and budgeting over the course of three budget cycles. So Jerry's interventionist, we included in FY '23, there are other positions that we're planning to include in FY '24, and there are other positions we're looking to include in FY '25. So we're trying to identify and stagger out, so that we have small increases over several years, as opposed to waiting until one year and having five or six new positions, and the budgetary implications that go with that.
All right, thank you, Brian. Ellen, are you all set?
I just hope we get that information, because I think it's critical.
Right. Hang on one second, because I saw Jenny's hand up, but if you want to sit next to Mrs. Nix, that way we can get you on the microphone, sorry. Go ahead, Jenny. In CNE, there were a couple of things that we were talking about that might help some of the students that are in kindergarten, that don't go to Glen Lake, that might help them get on board too. So they may be really long-shot things, but there was something that we were thinking possibly could be looked into, as some solutions to help some of the kids that aren't able to go to Glen Lake because of families' work situations or whatever, so we are thinking of some things to... Thank you, Jenny. So if you can just state your name.
Stacy Baltimore, Budget Committee.
Hi, Stacy, go ahead.
Thank you. This is a full-time position, correct, interventionist?
Yes.
And how, what is the actual breakdown of this 87,000, how much of that is?
Okay, so Kate has that for me, if I'm correct, Kate? Give me one second.
Yeah, when you, in the budget...
It's probably about 50 for the salary, and the rest is related benefits.
What are the qualifications of this position?
So the regular certified teacher, they do have two interventionist positions at Maple, so it's a certified teacher that can actually handle, you know, a couple of case, cases for students, special ed case managers. I don't think we need that at Bartlett, we really just need targeted intervention for our regular ed students.
And what's the, you mentioned there was a significant difference with Bartlett, what is the difference percentage-wise, how, what is the...
So we have, we have a lot of data to show that, but let's see, I'll go back to the pre-COVID data. So student growth, growth is a big issue, so for student growth, we were in the lowest 25% of schools that can see growth for students, 58% was, 58% for math, we're actually pretty good in math, but the 44th, lowest for ELA, meaning that our students are not able to access the baseline education. So compared to Maple, we, I have a lot of charts and things we could share along with Brian later, showing that our SAS scores are much less in third and fourth grade, NEAR scores are much lower, but they're coming in much lower, and then we're gradually increasing the scores as we go.
And primary grades, just to make sure board members are aware, we have a wide range of skills, so if you're a first-grade teacher, you're going to have children in your room that can read and are reading chapter books independently. You're going to have other children that don't know their letters, they don't know their colors, they don't know their numbers, and the teacher needs to be able to work with all of those children in a developmentally appropriate way. So it is a wide range when we look at, particularly in first and second grade, and the variability between kind of that knowledge base in kids, it's very significant.
And I don't know if you can see it, I mean, this is kind of, this is first grade, it's a snapshot, red and yellow, I can't show you for too long, because of course his names, that's second grade. So it's high, we significantly have students with high needs, but by fourth grade, they're, they're doing pretty well, so we're doing okay. But we just want them there quicker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Go ahead, Amanda.
What would be the budget implications of having a program like readiness, like New Boston has, where you have that extra year? It sounds like you have children who are coming in, in all different places, and that's the whole idea behind readiness. Does that add? I feel like it would just be like changing a first grade to a readiness class.
Right, and we have talked about that, I know New Boston has a readiness program, I don't think we have the space for it at Bartlett, nor the staffing. Would it be beneficial for some of those students? Definitely. Where we have 20 students in our class, that we, we just need to get them leveled up and move them on. They cannot stay full-time at Glen Lake either, which has been a problem in a lot of school districts, when you have a full-day kindergarten, you can keep a student back in kindergarten, and they can get a full year, almost like readiness, we're not able to do that at Glen Lake, because they don't have a full-day program. So is it a need? Yes. Can we meet it with our current building? No.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other questions before Jerry can go on?
I just want, I wanted to respond to your money question, 54,000-ish is the salary, and the balance of it is your associated benefits, like health insurance, dental, retirement, FICA, all the other fun stuff.
So you can come up and say your name, thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Lauren Dukas, Budget Committee, I just wanted clarification on something Superintendent Falke said, the 87,000, now this doesn't qualify for an ESAR grant use, but it sounds like it might, because it's for remediation, or did I misunderstand? This is something, this is an appropriation that's being asked for, that's not being taken from an ESAR grant?
Correct.
Why doesn't it qualify for...
So this, this is an example of a position that would be eligible for ESAR, and what we're trying to do is, so for example, right now, we have the special education position that Jerry mentioned, we have a half of a school counselor position at Mountain View, we have the dean of remediation, we have a number of positions that we've already put into ESAR, and we're trying to avoid kind of either services stopping, where there's essentially a service cliff that drops off, and all of a sudden now, we need to go back to not being able to provide interventions and supports that we were providing. And then we're trying to balance, spreading, as I was saying, spreading some of these positions over multiple fiscal years. So instead of coming in in FY '25, when all of the ESAR funds are ended, or ending, to come in and say, we're now going to put three new positions into the budget, what you see this year, is you see we strategically put in additional IT support, so trying to, again, this year, that IT support is being funded through ESAR. Next year, we're looking to move that into the, into the school budget, so that we can continue those services. This would be an eligible position, but what we were trying to do was spread this over multiple fiscal years.
So you want it to, in ideal terms, the position continues?
Yes.
It's not just the remediation for 2024?
This is a need at Bartlett, and if, for some reason, there no longer is this need, we have very consistently eliminated positions, moved positions, transferred positions, we do that pretty routinely.
You mentioned it before.
So if, if there was no longer a need at some point in the future, that position would get repurposed, or it would get moved or changed.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent.
Yeah, it's a great question.
Thank you. Good question.
It's one that we, we talked about, you know, trying to make sure you didn't have a cliff, because that's one of the concerns with ESAR, these grants, is that it could be a position, or it could just be just revenue that you count on, when that goes away, it's either you're forced to cut, like, all these things. So this one is just more of a staggered strategic approach.
All right, Jerry, go ahead, I think we're set.
All right, to just continue on with the state of where we are right now, 47% of Bartlett second graders, excluding special ed students, are at risk based on fluency benchmark results, and that's based upon our Wonders assessments, which is our ELA curriculum. So you can see the numbers going down, but still, there is a need there. And then by the time we get to third grade this year, 30%, 36% of the students are at risk based on their fluency benchmark results. So in fourth grade, I didn't put any data there, because by fourth grade, we've kind of caught up. So you can see that it, the data is showing we are getting there, but we, the kids are missing out on some of the educational components if they don't get there quicker, so this would really help us.
Oh, sorry, Jerry, go ahead.
Just because it does talk about the new position, so what I'd like to understand is, this is a budget that would start the next academic year, which would be end of August, beginning of September. What is preventing us from trying to get this position now using ESAR grants, if it's so needed at the beginning of the year?
Well, what's, what's preventing us, I would say, probably the desire to hold on to as much ESAR funds as we can to spend on a window, a boiler project, something of that nature. I would also say, we have struggled greatly with trying to fill positions like this. I would also say we have struggled greatly with trying to fill positions like this. So to try to do that mid-year would probably be a challenge for us, but this would be a position that we could put in into the ESER grant now.
May I follow up?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if we don't know this is going to be the appropriate cost for this individual so they're, because they're so hard to find, wouldn't it be better to try to RFP it now or get somebody at now to find out what the true cost would be that we could actually put into the budget?
So the true cost, the only variability on the cost is we budgeted for a what, Kate? Masters eight, masters five?
Masters nine.
Masters nine. So that, that salary of $54,000, I said 50, I was right in the ballpark, that's anticipating a master's step nine. If we hire higher, the cost is higher. If we hire lower, the cost is lower. So that, that's kind of a, a safe, middle-of-the-road kind of approach to budgeting. This is something that we've talked about in the past. This number is probably higher than what we would actually fill it with, but that's just kind of a, an average salary that we anticipate.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jared. Go ahead.
Let's see, and finally, let's see, the pre-COVID data study by Athena, which I referenced previously, 49% of students at Bartlett were proficient at ELA, and Maple was 69% proficient. So you can see we had a need there. 2019 SAS math scores at Bartlett were 57% proficient, and Maple was 68% proficient. So that's why Title I helps us a lot. We just need that additional boost.
Go ahead, Ellen.
A lot of good questions on that. Thank you for considering this.
I guess I'm, I'm, these numbers really alarm me because it's directly related to our children, really directly, and how it impacts them all around in their early education. Yeah, they may catch up, may catch up by a certain grade level, but in the meantime, they're missing out and they're struggling.
We've made a lot of slow, steady growth.
I understand, but.
And we have added Title I, added special ed teachers. So we are looking at this holistically over time.
The kids are only there once, though. If there is a, quite honestly, and I can appreciate the use of the ESER grants because I know more than half of our CIP is being funded by grants over the next few years. But if this strikes me, and maybe I'm alone, as so critical for our children, direct impact on these children right now, I, I'd like to see us use some of the ESER money on this as opposed to windows. I don't know how that can happen, how that can be, because I know we've been through the CIP process already, but this is direct and immediate, and I, maybe I'm alone, but I'd like to see us try and get this position filled sooner rather than later.
When we do our budget discussion workshops, bring that up when we can talk about it at that time. Are you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Ginny.
Has the IXL program been started in Bartlett? So they do have that going on, I mean, just started so that it's really a program where the teachers have to be taught it and run up to speed.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
IXL.
Oh, IXL, yes. Right, yes.
Have you been piloted on that? Or you have?
Yes, and that is working very well for all students, but especially our lowest performing students, to give them that direct practice. So we are implementing that.
Okay, so there is a little bit of remediation kind of happening, but not.
Definitely.
With the interventionist.
And with the technology, we have the iPads and the computers. We've got, you know, we're doing, we're doing a lot for our students and they are improving. And this has been something we've been looking at over time.
Yeah, but this certainly would be a much higher level of helping students.
Yes.
And that special education position that we, we were speaking about earlier, that's one of the positions that we're targeting to include in the budget in either FY '24 or FY '25. So that's another position that will have a cliff to it. So for us to be able to continue that, that would need to move into the general fund. So just sharing that because right now you've got this, the interventionist position as well as that special ed position that will need to move into a future budget.
Are you all set, Ginny?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Okay. The rest is really very small corrections, like Scott said. It's, we've looked at actuals and tried to get the budget in order so that way we just moved money around from place to place to actually show what we're doing. So most of these are less, 2,000 or less. Let's see, we did use $5,000 for the new furniture purchase, which is the desks that we got for, to keep children apart, so that was a big one, a one-time expense. $5,000 for Wonders and WonderWorks consumables. So basically, Wonders is our main curriculum. WonderWorks, again, is the curriculum that we use for students that are in that gap. They're not quite there yet, so we did have to bump up some of our lower tiered Wonders, WonderWorks for that. But we're all set. We've got enough now. Brain Pop has been a big addition for us so that we have the same access as Maple Ave. Brain Pop is another one of those things like IXL where the students can make a lot of progress. And sidewalk repairs, was that because of the, was that because of the tree?
I'm not sure. I think, you know, Randy said that there was some sidewalks that needed repair because they were a lot, there was a trip hazard.
Oh, yeah. We cut down our tree out front, so we, and we did have to repair that, so I think to fix that. So that's all small things at this point.
Yes, I would say like overall, like when I review the budget with Jerry and Bernie, we, we kind of, as you saw in that first slide, there's a lot of reductions, and then there's a lot of, and then on the next slide, there were some additions, but just try to go through each line by line and see where we could make cuts, and then we knew that in certain areas we needed to increase. But I think overall, I think it was like a $4,000 increase when you take a look at the minuses and the pluses. So I think it's a reflection that, you know, Jerry and her staff went through, went through their budget and did the right thing, so.
So does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Gogan before she leaves? Ginny?
I, I just have one, and I'm probably a pest about this always, I'm sorry, but I get dizzy sometimes looking at the .3, the .2, the 1, the .7 of all of the different services that you have that go between Bartlett, Glen Lake, and Maple Avenue. Does that all work for all of you? And when you have your meetings and stuff, do you really get to be able to get all of those people plus the parents together in a meeting?
Yes, thanks to Zoom, and we're switching to Teams soon, so yes, we are able to. It's much easier now.
Do you do your IEP meetings and stuff on Zoom now?
Yes.
To make that work?
We took over the conference room. It's actually the reading specialist room, so she can serve as four or five students at the same time, and we're doing all of our conferences via Zoom. It works for our parents as well because they can continue to stay at work, go out in their car, do their Zoom meeting, and then come back in. If parents would like to request an in-person meeting, we could, we could do that, too. But yeah, it works for us.
When you feel like the services are, everybody gets their services with the time that they need between cars, driving back and forth to schools and stuff?
Yes, it does work. It's a little complicated. You've got to remember which day is what, when you can schedule things, but it does work.
Okay, good enough.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Ginny. Anybody else have any questions before we move on to Maple Avenue? All right. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
All right, next we will welcome Mrs. Johnson to come up, and she'll be presenting Maple Ave's budget this evening.
Hello, everyone, and I apologize for my back to all of you folks back there. So I'm here to talk about Maple Avenue's requested budget for the next full year. So a lot of these things are going to look familiar in this structure. If you take a look at our FY 2022 budget, the base for FY 2023, the new spending that we're asking for, and then the requested budget, you'll see that the difference between our FY '23 requested and FY '22 is $57,269. A lot of that, as people have said already, is energy. So we had a big increase in propane that we're projecting. There's some maintenance and repairs, those sorts of things. So we'll talk about those and some of the notable changes. We do also have, as other folks have mentioned, some contractual increases, and we do have some increases that are going to be related to our projected increased enrollment. So when you have more students, if we have services that require subscriptions, sometimes we have to have more subscriptions that we purchase, we have to have more consumables. So some of those increases are from that as well. Testing is also a slight increase, and there's some software increases, too, that we can talk about. Okay. Our historical enrollment, we looked at for those several years prior to this year, we looked at the June enrollment. So if you notice, it's been fairly steady at Maple Avenue. Last year, our June enrollment was pretty low, 435, and I think we had a banner year for kids who were either being homeschooled or going to private schools because of our hybrid approach, just the fallout from COVID. So that was very low. We did bounce right back this September. The numbers on Scott's were a little higher, 496. We were 493 a few weeks ago, so we are continuing to go up. People are continuing to re-enroll at Maple Avenue, so we're continuing to grow. We are projecting a pretty big jump for next year, and largely that's because if you look at our current fourth grade, 114 students in fourth grade, that is a small cohort compared to all the rest of them. They are moving on to Mountain View, and the numbers that we received from Glen Lake, based on what Kathy Stoll had shared with us, we are anticipating about 110 students from Glen Lake, and then historically, we get, as Brian said, 30 to 40 of our students every year that are from other kindergartens or no kindergartens at all. So that is our estimate for next year. So that does push us up a bit in terms of our estimated enrollment.
Hang on one second, Mrs. Johnson. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I know there's been a lot of discussion about some parents have pulled their kids out of school this year based on some of our COVID policies. Do you know how many students that actually is that may be in our school system next year that currently aren't there this year?
I do not know that number. I can try to find that out. We haven't had this year a whole lot, off the top of my head, that I can tell you there's students that are not in the building because of the COVID policies. We have had, we did have some people who voiced concern early on, but enrolled their students anyway, but I can get that number for you.
I just want to make sure that are projected. I know that you have a scientific method. I just want to make sure that we incorporate those kids that might have been pulled out for those reasons.
I can find that number out for you.
Thank you, Jared.
Don't want to hazard a guess. Any other questions on that slide before I move on? Okay.
That looks good. Go ahead.
Okay. And this is our projected class size. So again, as other folks have mentioned, we do have larger class sizes than Bartlett. We do have some large rooms, so most, many of our rooms are still not quite large enough, but they are definitely bigger than Bartlett's. Kind of the breakdown is for class size, we're really trying to keep a class size for our first grades of 20 or under. We do have seven first grade classrooms, six second grade classrooms, so we're looking at about 23 students per classroom, six third grade classrooms with about 21 students per classroom, and grade four is our smallest in terms of numbers of classrooms, five, and that would be approximately 26 students per classroom.
Oh, hang on one second. Go ahead, Ellen.
26 fourth graders in one classroom, and it's not 900 square feet? How can we do that? Oh, I guess we have to do it because we don't have room, but we've done it in the past.
We've done this for decades.
But doesn't make it right.
I know.
Use the library, use something else, but 26 fourth graders in a room undersized? I just don't find that a wise use of our space in, in meeting our kids' needs. Am I the only one that feels that way, or is everybody happy with 26 kids in a room? I think that's too many.
It's not a function of being happy. I, I would say happy is not the right descriptor, and when my son was in first grade, he had 26 kids in his first grade classroom. So we try to maintain our numbers. We try to keep the numbers low. We have a massive space needs issue in this school district. So give me another teacher, the only place I have is to take the library away again. And this board will remember because from a policy perspective, we took the library. Maple Ave had no library, which we also ideologically think is very wrong. So these are the challenges that we have.
And my kids were in that library many years ago, so were yours. I just find that, I know we try and do the best we can. I just, possibly, I don't know, needs to be readdressed. I find that to be educationally unsound, so for whatever it's worth.
Go ahead, Mrs. Nix.
I do agree. I'm just wondering, I am, I'll be honest, I don't know what the school looks like. I've walked by the front. Is there room for a modular? Is there space outside?
There already is. We put a four, we put a four classroom modular about six years ago there.
And there's one out front.
And there's one out front.
But it's not being used as a classroom.
We unfortunately have a lot of temporary modular classrooms.
But all our elementary schools have at least a quad.
Yes.
Of all of, all three.
Yeah.
Yes.
And another thing that we have done, I mean, that is a concern, obviously, class size. So we are also pretty creative about moving around classrooms. We had a lot of movement this year because we do have some of our classrooms that are on the smaller size and some of them are on the larger side. So that is one of the big moves we did this summer is moving the fourth grades to some of the larger classrooms in the building because they are our larger classes right now as well. They're not 26, but the fourth grades are the larger ones. Again, we have that smaller cohort in fourth grade that is moving on, but we're kind of planning for that. So we just, you know, teachers pack their things and move to a new classroom depending on the size, so. But we do have the space challenges. And we've been really, the teachers have been wonderful about accommodating for that. We've done a lot in classrooms in terms of identifying what do we really need to have in a classroom. We want students to have all the things that they need in a classroom, but there are things that build up over the years. If you have a teacher who's been teaching for a while, you get a lot of things, and people are making some, I think, some really good choices about what do we need to keep in here and what don't we need to keep, which is a plus because it makes a learning environment that is a lot more clear and organized for kids as well, so. There are the silver lining, if you will.
Before you go on, Ginny has her hand up.
Yep.
Sorry, Mrs. Johnson.
No.
I don't think it's like excellent to have 26 in a classroom, but thank you for not putting 26 in a first grade classroom and having it in a fourth grade classroom where kids, you know, have a, or have more maturity and probably easier to sit down and learn other than first grade.
Right, yeah, trying to keep that number down is definitely important in those primary grades, don't they?
All right, I think we're set. Go ahead.
Okay, so, oops, I'm skipping a page here. All right, this is an overview of our current staffing. As I mentioned, we have 24 classroom teachers in grades one through four. We have one full-time reading specialist. We have five full-time special educators. We have three literacy and math support teachers there, what we call our interventionists. Ours do case, each of them case manage between two and four special education students, so these three interventionists are certified educators both in elementary education and in special education. We have for related services, we have one full-time occupational therapist, one full-time speech language specialist, and one speech language pathologist who is there two days, full-time guidance, and three and a half days of a school psychologist. Our current staffing this year is we have 19 paraprofessionals in the building. We have 18 of those positions filled right now. I anticipate that next year, if all the numbers we have are accurate, we may go down a couple positions in terms of paraprofessionals. We have three unified art teacher, arts teachers. We have full-time art, full-time music, and .8 of PE, our media specialist full-time, and a half-time library paraprofessional, full-time nurse, two building administrators, and we have three administrative assistants. So we have our principal secretary, our front office school secretary, and our special education secretary. So as I sort of mentioned, we do have some other changes that, two lines, most of our funding, we tried to keep pretty flat and decrease things if we could. There are some small changes that were lower. I picked just some of the more noteworthy ones, looking at a $1,800, $1,806 increase due to increased subscription rates for things like Lincoln Library. due to increased subscription rates for things like Lincoln Library, EBSCO, World Book, Brain Pop. So the subscription rate simply went up. We did, again, have some subscription rate increases for some of our special education software as well. There is a one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-five-dollar increase in maintenance for the FM systems. Last year, and over the past few years, we've been trying to really upgrade our FM systems. And for people who aren't aware, that is a system that's in each classroom. The speaker, the teacher wears a speaker, a microphone, and there is a speaker in the classroom. It does help to bring the voice up above the background noise. Last year, we took advantage of some price decreases at Phonak, and were able to get some more FM systems, because we felt with our classes coming back to full-time, all the full classes, and everybody wearing masks, the idea of the teacher's voice being able to kind of be up and projected would be good. There's a lot of data that supports use of FM systems in elementary school classrooms. So we now are able to have one in every classroom. But with this comes an increase in the service fees. Each of them come with a service fee, and it's about a hundred and sixty-five dollars for each unit, which is wonderful. What that will cover is any repairs that need to be done. It will also cover a one-time loss. So if we really get one loss, or it's completely destroyed, they'll replace it. These systems are between two thousand and, about fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars each. So we want to take good care of them and keep them maintained. So that's why there's quite an increase in that one. Wanted to throw a decrease in there. Our postage went down, and we anticipate that will go down again. That's that e-registration, and we're hoping that's going to be more and more efficient. There's a new request for bottled water. And what this is, we have a water bubbler. It's in the staff lounge. We have one in the nurse's office as well. In the past, we purchased water for those two locations through Springfling money that we raised at our Springfling fundraiser. The last two years, we haven't had Springfling, or everybody knows why. And we did have our PFT, who were able to chip in and pay for some of that, pay for that water for this year. So we are asking to throw that into the budget, because we don't, and are not sure what's going to happen in terms of fundraising. So that is an increase. There is an increase of about fifteen hundred dollars in building repairs that if people have some questions about, I have some things listed about what areas we were looking at. There's that almost eighteen thousand dollar increase due to an increased cost in propane. That's a really big jump. And then about twenty-three hundred dollars increase in overall building maintenance. Anybody have questions about any of those?
Anybody have questions for Mrs. Johnson? Oh, go ahead, Ellen.
Just wondering, do you have the same type of reading data from incoming first graders, as we just heard from Bartlett?
I don't have it here, but we do have, Mrs. Chisholm collects all that data, so that's certainly data that we can get for you, too.
I would appreciate seeing that as well. Thank you.
I would also direct the board back to the presentation that Dr. Chisholm did to the board. So we had Athena come in, when was that? Jerry, do you remember when that was? Maybe, maybe March-ish? But Athena came in and gave a very comprehensive presentation, and she had packets. We'd be happy to send those packets back out if people would like them.
Thank you, Ellen. Anyone else for Mrs. Johnson? All right, seeing none. Thank you. All right, so that concludes our presentations for tonight.
Does it? Scott?
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
So the question I have for the board, on Wednesday, we'll have food service. We'll have Glen Lake, Mountain View Middle School, and the high school. My question to you is, I feel pretty good I can do the food service presentation. Megan has been kind of going, her staffing situation is tough. And if I don't have to have her on Wednesday night, I feel pretty good that I-
Oh, I'll take the, no, Megan.
We're good?
Yeah, Megan has gone above and beyond. And is, in addition to all of her administrative responsibilities, because we've been so short-staffed in the kitchen, she's been doing production.
Everything.
So if we can give our wonderful food service director the night off, please do.
Yeah, that's fine. Everybody's okay with that?
I feel pretty good that I could go through it.
And if we have any questions, you can always get back to us when we see each other on the eighteenth. All right, so Wednesday night, we're going to meet back here at six o'clock. We'll do the same thing. After the presentations, though, on Wednesday night, we will have our regular agenda. Superintendent's report, subcommittee, our regular board stuff. That's not happening tonight. So all of you can leave. You, thank you so much for all coming out and doing the presentation. Right there, all set to go. And the budget committee, thank you for coming tonight. We'll see you Wednesday at six.
And I'll keep your name tags, all right? Because I know that, uh, that we're giving instructions to collect them.
Yeah, we're going to do that right now.
Thank you, guys.
We're done with budget? I can put that?
Yeah, we're done with budget presentations for tonight. So the next thing on the agenda is public comment for budget presentations. And I don't see any, because I think everybody is leaving. So I will close public comment. Bye, everybody. Thank you so much. Thank you. See you Wednesday. So is there other business that may legally come before the meeting, before we go into non-public? All right, seeing none. So I, which one do we want to go into first, E?
We'll go into, yeah, let's go into C first.
So I'll need a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety-one dash A, semi-colling three, two, C. Matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy, if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. Second, Jared, second by Ellen. I'm going to do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Heather, yes. So we're in non-public. So we'll let GTV break down.
Yep.